Meeting at the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, June 21st. If you would to leave stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Matt Giedler, Senior Minister at the Greenwood Christian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pray with me, please. Father God, we're grateful for every day of life that you give us, and we are especially grateful for life here in this place. But I'm grateful for this community, all the people that make it up, and especially for those who are gathered here tonight. We're grateful, Lord, for anyone who is willing to undertake the task of leadership. We thank you for that calling and the sacrifices that go along with it. We know, Lord, that we're in a great season of growth and expansion in our community. We thank you for that. There are growing pains, of course, that go along with that. And so we ask for wisdom and we ask for patience, both for those in the position of decision-making and those who are just figuring out ways around some of the things that are going on in terms of changes to infrastructure. For, Father, as the size and the diversity of our community increase, we ask that you would help us to be doubly patient, that you would help us to be good listeners, Father, that you would help us always to look not only to our own interests, but to the interests of those around us. We ask, Father, that you would help us as a community to model the kind of kindness and patience and just others-focusedness that it really requires for us to be able to enjoy the very best of the country that we're a part of, can be about. But I pray that you would watch over the proceedings here tonight. We ask that you just give great guidance and insight to those who are gathering information, those who are in a position of making decisions. And we ask, Father, that you would continue to bless the community or help us to make this a great place and continue to keep this a great place to raise families, just a great place, Father, to be neighbors who look forward to seeing all that you have in store for us here. Thanks for each person who's a part of this evening. You pray this all through the name of your Son, Jesus.
Thank you. May we see it? Just a reminder to the councilors to please turn on your microphones. And roll call, please.
Bates?
Present.
Campbell?
Here.
Dine?
Here.
Gibson?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Hopper?
Here.
Lexi?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
Here.
And we have a forum. All of you should have received copies of our minutes from our last regular meeting on June 7th. No motion?
I saw a motion.
This was from Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
This was from Mr. Lexi. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call in a minute.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson? Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports in Corporation Council.
You should receive the items semi-monthly and the list of your report on SharePoint. And if you have questions about either of those, please let me know.
Right. Anyone want to control it at this time?
Not at this time.
Any other committee or board reports?
Mr. President, I'd like to announce that the social will be reopening fully as of July the 14th. Right now, they're open, but it's limited programs. The only restriction will be if they don't have their vaccine to use wear masks. And no outside food will be brought in for community use.
All right, good. Any other committee or board reports? Hearing none, then this is opportunity for public comments. If you're here in the audience tonight, we should address the council concerning an item that is on the agenda. Please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit.
Hi, my name's Joan Cuttigan. I'm here about the proposed leasing problems of Combs Road. I've lived there, I've been a resident of Johnson County my entire life, and I've lived there, Johnson County, Combs Road, for over 15 years now. And my main consideration and my main concern is the fact that when you lease property, you're not always held accountable for how you maintain your property. If you go and drive up and down Combs Road, you'll see, but at least in the two-mile stretch that I live from Main Street to Johnson County or the Camry Road, people take care of their properties, their grass is cut, it's trimmed, everybody's houses look nice. And the biggest fear for everybody that lives out there is bringing leasing property, and there's no laws and regulations that the people will be held accountable for in those particular properties that they're leasing. Then it's going to make our value of our property go down. And we work really hard in that area, and with the help of Johnson County and Green, we're working together since that is the buffer zone, to finally have the noise out there. And the fact that this is a proposal that's already been through the whole process, as I hear for the second time, first time we ever heard about it, but this was on the paper, a Johnson County newspaper about here about weeks ago. So that's why I didn't speak the first time, and that's why I'm here tonight. I would ask all of you to consider putting rental properties that close to your homes and think about that whole thing when you're taking this thing into consideration tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight wish to address the council? Mr. Marv?
I am Dale Marvnu, 1153 Thillman Drive, here in Greenwood. And of course, last week on 2114, Mr. Prime from Van Beil was made a presentation on the benefits of the property moving in there. The one word that really bothered me a lot in the presentation is concept. He had a concept drawing, which wasn't included in the minutes. He had a letter that was to be read into the record, but wasn't included in the minutes, another thing. But if you and I were remodeling our bathroom, if we were doing our house, we're not dealing with concepts. We have a picture of what we're going to do. And Greenwood has been burnt, or at least its citizens, like Apia, we've been burnt before with concepts. On Spring, Greenwood Springs Road, in concept, we have a luxury apartment. In concept, it was built by a local builder. On concept, it was run by a local builder. And in concept, it was managed by a local builder. But the reality is that none of those things turned out to be true. Our local builder took the millions we gave them and moved to Carmel. It's not run by a local person. And wow, the only thing you can say about it is it does not have vinyl. This fabulous place, and that it's going to be built, we really need more information on it, besides it won't have vinyl, even though it's backed up against a warehouse. Apparently, there's no rule that allows that. And we know that the warehouse said quite kindly, "You can't complain about light pollution, or dirt or dust, or noise pollution all over the place." Because we were here first, apparently that doesn't work for residents who don't want these things coming up. Apparently, only warehouses have the ability to say that. So I'd like you to stop and say, hey, let's not approve a concept. Let's approve an actual drawing, and actually hold people responsible for that. The concepts are just bad news, the ones that don't seem accurate. And the presentation that was shown two weeks ago should be included in the approved minutes, not part of that presentation that excludes the book, Artistic Drawings. So for those reasons, I would hope that you would consider not approving it until you have the documentation and we have more than a concept to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marv. Anyone else?
Very quickly, Eric Prime, Van Beil Law, from 225 South Emerson. Wasn't anticipating making a rebuttal here, but I do need to address both of those points very quickly. First of all, the accountability is there. That's actually why this is a good project, because you have one owner, you have one property manager that will take care of the entire place, and has every incentive to keep it up to ensure future vulnerability. These aren't run out to individuals, families, and they just do whatever they want. It works just like an apartment complex. You rent a unit, and while you're there, you can use it. But when you vacate, it will be renovated and renewed by the people that own it. So there is accountability. Concepts, that's all you do at the annexation and reselling stage. They don't do all the very specific engineering. It's the new company that haven't built anything in Greenwood yet. So what I showed you in the presentation was, sure, a concept plan, but that's what they have now. They actually have to go back through the process of getting construction plans and going through all of that with the staff. So there will be a lot more meat on the bone when that time comes in the proper stage of the process. But what I wanted to say very quickly, I'm sure my five minutes is running out, is that when this was voted on, first reading, it passed unanimously, 9-0, but with an amendment that required, or prohibited, rather, all vinyl. I didn't say anything at the meeting, because I didn't know 100% at that point, but I did confirm with my client that is a deal breaker. This will not move forward if there is a prohibition of vinyl. Part of that is that they have to put about a half a million dollars into Combs Road to improve it from their property line to property line that's full-depth reclamation, passing blisters, AC, E-cell lanes. And they just can't make the numbers work with not being able to use vinyl. I'll show you the difference, is that right now, in order to do, this is kind of their standard three-unit. This is the front-load unit, the front, rather, rear-load unit, the front-facing, they can see on Combs Road. To do this in the current vinyl product that they use is about $5,600, $3,500. And to do this with hardy plank or stone would be $30,000. So multiply that by the number of units in the proposed project, and it becomes impossible for them to make the numbers work. But more importantly, they don't do 100% vinyl. This is one of their units in Huber Heights, Ohio. That is vinyl siding. It's poured in that, and you can't tell from this distance whether it's wood, vinyl, or hardy plank. But they do masonry knee walls, some people call it wingscoating, around all of their units. So you can see that here, that there is masonry on the bottom of the unit. And vinyl, this is two-story, of course, so there's a little more vinyl than there would be on the one-story units. The majority of the units in our proposed project are on B-c story. So what I'm asking tonight, what my client's asking, is that a motion you made when this comes up for a vote to remove the prohibition of vinyl, to go back to the original ordinance language that would allow the annexation and allow this project to move forward. And that's all I have to proceed. All right, thank you, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. First reading, ordinance 2123.
An ordinance establishing essential employee COVID-19 premium pay and regarding full and additional appropriation from the American Rescue Plan, Modern Virus Local Peaceful Recovery Fund, to budget classification for long months, $750,000, funded by Moon Pay, sponsored by Dawn, Bates, and Gibson.
No motion?
Sir, may I?
This one, Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dine. This is scheduled for a public hearing. Open it up for a public hearing. If you're here tonight and wish to speak for or against ordinance 2123, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, no one? Close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Mr. Wright, do you have anything you want to say, or just here to answer questions?
Just here for questions.
All right, any questions or any discussion on ordinance 2123? I think it was explained last time, it was pretty straightforward, so. All right, hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2123, first reading.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance 2123 passes, first reading, 9 to 0. Ordinance 2124.
An ordinance, and then doing the 2021 Salary Ordinance, Common Council Ordinance, number 2031, to change the database technician title and increase the position salary in the Department of Community Development Services, and to include employee COVID-19 premium pay, sponsored by Dawn, Bates, and Gibson.
No motion?
Sir, may I?
This one, Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Dine. There is a proposed amendment, would like to address that.
Oh, the change to the database technician and CDS, that should be retroactive to June 1st. I missed that one, and retroacting, and so there is a motion to amend ordinance 2124 to make the change to the database technician and CDS retroactive to June 1st, 2021, the promi passage and adoption.
I'd like that motion.
Motion to amend ordinance 2124 as stated by Mr. Bates, now a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2124.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
And Bates?
Aye.
Amendment to ordinance 2124 passes on a vote of nine to zero. Any further discussion of ordinance 2124 as amended? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2124 as amended, first reading.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance 2124 as amended passes, first reading, 9 to 0. Second reading, resolution 2114.
And a resolution of the Greenwood Common Council to adopt the written peaceful plan for the annexation of approximately 32.93 acres located on the west side of North Combs Road, 2688 and 952 North Combs Road, where the state annexation ordinance, number 2114, sponsored by Dine.
No motion? Show him, this one, Mr. Dine, now a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hill. Any discussion, resolution 2114? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2114, second reading.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
May.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
And Dine?
Aye.
Resolution 2114 passes, second reading, 7 to 2. Ordinance 2114.
An ordinance annexing certain territory contiguous to the city of Greenwood, Indiana, placing it within the corporate boundaries and making it a part of the city of Greenwood, and redefining the corporate boundaries of the city of Greenwood, Indiana, to include approximately 32.93 acres located on the west side of North Combs Road, commonly known as the Robert Robinson Trust Property Annexation, sponsored by Dine.
No motion? Show him, this one, Mr. Dine, now a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hill. Any discussion, ordinance 2114?
Mr. President, I would motion that we remove the prohibiting of vinyl from this ordinance.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Middleton to amend ordinance 2114 to remove the requirement for vinyl? Now a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hill. Any discussion on the amendment to ordinance 2114?
Clearly, I'm opposed. You know, I'd like to see it stay hiver cement, you know? You just had a huge storm, which is kind of a perfect example of, you know, baseball-sized hail coming through. You know, vinyl, after 10, 15 years, it got brutal. So hail, if it happened here in Greenwood, would destroy that, whereas hardy board or hiver cement would not. Talk some about, you know, upkeep. You know, the upkeep is why you have to paint it occasionally. Upkeep is much easier on hiver cement, lasts longer. It looks nicer. Sure, everything looks nice when it's first built, vinyl looks fine when it's first there. It doesn't last. You know, one of the big things that's happening now with neighborhoods, and even some single-family newly-built neighborhoods, is you have hedge funds coming in and buying up the whole thing. So now you've got somebody out in California, wherever they're from, who are now in charge of these neighborhoods. Yes, Dora might be a great partner, and they'll take care of it, but at some point, they're probably going to sell the entire thing, cash out, and move on. And then we've got somebody else taking care of it who may not do it as good a job. And finally, I think the biggest thing is, you know, we've asked, I think this is my 12th year, almost 12 years now, we've asked folks not to build with vinyl. It has passed almost unanimously. What this says to people in Mr. Williams' district is that we don't care about people who are east of 65. Put whatever on their house, it's fine, or buy a warehouse. Nobody cares, because you're out there. That's just not true. I care as much about my folks on the west side of town as I do about the people over on the east side. I want the entire city to look nice, to look nice 30 years from now, not just when it's first built, a year from now. I think you should note this down and keep it as hardy board. If they can't do it, somebody else will come along who will. So... That's my two cents.
All right. Any other comments on the amendment to ordinance 2114?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say a few things. I've certainly, it's baffling, it's been baffling to me, this whole process, this new, I don't know, I would call it a cultural paradigm. I just, I just, I didn't, culturally, when I was growing up, you know, it was always the idea that someday, you wanted all the pieces of the rock. And that's an old phrase that maybe some people never heard before. But the idea was to be able to own your own home. And by owning your own home, you had a stake in society. You had a voice in your government, because you were an owner. You were a property owner, you were a taxpayer. And maybe there is a cultural paradigm that's taking place here, and I'm not aware of it. Maybe it's taken place in some other parts of the country. And I just can't imagine, you know, someone wanting to rent. And I know we have rentals, I understand that I had to rent for a number of years apartments too, before I was able to own my own home. But this is just, not that I'm for or against this particular new concept. I know we don't have any where in Greenwood, as far as I know. We've found about over 100 homes that are all rentals when it's built out. That's just, I don't know, that just really baffles me and kind of goes against my train of thought. So that's kind of what I see all this. I certainly came in here tonight thinking that, you know, everything's going to be fine. I didn't have any reason not to vote for it. But finally, I did hear someone, and not that I should base my decision on that, that they were concerned about it, because they're a property owner out in that direction. I certainly like a councilor there, David, that, you know, we're all, I think, on this board, that's concerned about the aesthetics of our communities, anyone else. But on the other side of the coin, we also have an obligation to see that, you know, that is the case. And we have the responsibility to see that that is the case, and that we could leave, you know, 10 years from now, most of us probably won't be on this council. We can leave, you know, some kind of legacy of what we think that Greenwood should look like.
Mr. Hopper, normally, I agree with you and feel like that it's not appropriate for us to have vinyl on homes. But I think more and more of our young people are not going to be able to afford a home. And what I like about this project is that it's there in the area where there's workers, there isn't really a lot of opportunity not to be in an apartment, so to speak, and have neighbors above you or below you. And if this were not in the warehouse area, I would not be in favor of it. I do feel like that this is a spot that it would be appropriate. And I feel like that it's giving someone an opportunity to be more in a home environment rather than an apartment environment.
All right, any other discussion on the council, any of the comments?
I would just say that I do, in my neighborhood, specifically, there's a lot of houses with vinyl. And just because the house is vinyl, I don't think it means that it can't be, it can't look nice. We've been taken care of. I'm more towards, since this is a one-owner property, that it'll be able, we'll have, it'll be easier for, to hold that party accountable as far as the law goes, and upkeep of the concepts.
Anyone else?
What I would like to say, Mr. President, is if vinyl is an issue, and I hear Mr. Hopper's issues with it, and I don't totally disagree. If it is that issue, I think that needs to be taken up in the standards that we have. I don't know how we can look at a developer that meets the standards and say, no, we want more than the standards. So if that's what you want, if that's what we're going to continually come back and say, no vinyl, then that should be, you know, part of those standards. And I mean, I look at District 3 over there, I mean, we had a room full of folks owning warehouses across from Homecoming, and that didn't matter. So I don't know what... This is so special to be fighting against when, you know, the people living over there obviously didn't want that warehouse to cross, cross the street from them, but it's there. So that's all I have to say about it.
The reason we can say we don't want vinyl now is because they have to come for us to get the next and to build these properties in the first place. That's why we just say it. You know, before we switched to this unified development ordinance, all multifamily housing of this had to be brick or stone. But whatever reason we changed it, I don't think we should have. We should probably go back to make brick or stone a requirement. I don't care if we do it for single-family houses as well. I'm making this all go all together greatly.
I agree with Mr. Hopper's point that we are being asked for a special favor, and at that time, it's appropriate for us to make reasonable requests.
All right, anybody else?
Well, and I want to make it clear that my stand would be still to have the hardy plank on homes that are built and purchased by individuals. I have a different attitude with this being a rental property.
I don't, because I don't think any less of the folks who are going to rent it, the folks who are with Iowa.
I don't think any less of them, David, but I think that the fact that there is a property management there, also, a lot of the former vinyl projects, they were a thinner vinyl. And I do think that we do have requirements as to the thickness of the vinyl. So I think that helps us. But as far as individual homes, I would still stay with having the hardy plank.
I think it's evident if you drive around and look at some of our existing rental properties here in Greenwood, looking at multifamily, even right here on Emerson Smith Valley, you've got Mission Hills, which is solid brick, that complex is 10 years old. Outside looks still brand-new. You go just south of Beck's Village, where Wayne Scotting, or me, or whatever you call it, final, that apartment complex was actually built after, but looks older. So I think what we're looking at is not the short term, but what, 20, 30 years down the road, what does this property look like? So I do agree with Hopper.
All right. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2114.
Kim?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
May.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
May.
Bates?
May.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
And Gibson?
Aye.
Amendment passes on a vote of five to four. Any further discussion on ordinance 2114 as amended? Hearing none, then roll call, second reading, ordinance 2114 as amended.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
May.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
May.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Hill?
Ordinance 2114 passes on a vote of five to four. Ordinance 2120.
An ordinance to amend the text of Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Traffic and Parking Regulations, Article 2 to amend Section 8-8 prohibiting truck traffic on certain streets to include portion of E-cell lanes sponsored by Dine and Gibson.
No motion? Show him, this one, Mr. Dine, second. Second, Ms. Gibson. Any discussion, ordinance 2120?
I can rebeat the horse.
No, no need to, I don't think.
Okay.
All right, roll call, ordinance 2120.
Lexi?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dine?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? And Hopper?
Aye.
Ordinance 2120 passes, second reading, a vote of nine to zero. Ordinance 2122.
An ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 10 of the Greenwood Municipal Code, 1919. An ordinance amending Chapter Six, Article Ten of the Greenwood Municipal Code, nineteen ninety-three, as amended to amend certain provisions of consumer fireworks regulations. Yes, regarding dates of use and establishing a specific penalty for violation. That was amended, so it should actually read, "To amend certain provisions of the consumer fireworks regulations to establish a specific penalty for violation."
Now a motion, motion of Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
And Mr. Dine, any discussion? I will say of all the ordinances we've had before, so why this one made the news. Ordinance, any further discussion?
I'll just say something really quick based off of the lengthy discussion we had last meeting. After that, I actually found out that Avon Brownford Cardinal Sister of Fisher Springs, Eastfield, New Whiteland, Noblesville, Westfield, Whiteland, Scienceville, and Bartersville all have the dates that we proposed. I'm not going to move for that now, but that will be something I bring back. And all of them have their own fireworks. We just voted on an ordinance that, you know, it's hard to believe. That doesn't necessarily mean I think we shy away from trying to help folks out. So I just wanted to say that.
I will say that Saturday night, there were fireworks in my neighborhood, which is earlier than our current ordinance allows, so they're already shooting off. All right, any further discussion?
Quick question, do you know when the fireworks are out or are they really firmly like ours?
Fishers is, the rest are this year on the third and fourth.
There's nothing special about those dates, this is the state law.
Yeah, state law. We cannot make it stricter than state law. And I think those cities just abide by state, what the state law says.
Yes.
All right, here we go, further discussion, ordinance, roll call, ordinance 2120, second reading.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'm sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two, second reading.
Phillipson?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Ordinance 2122 passes, second reading, nine to zero. New business introductions, ordinance 2125.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code, nineteen ninety-three, Section Two, dash ninety-three, to increase the cash change fund for the Parks and Recreation Department of Public Centers sponsored by Gibson and Phillipson.
Mr. Wright? Yes, so the reason we're bringing this to you is the weekend before last, Freedom Springs had record attendance. They had over thirty-two thousand people on Saturday for the three-day weekend in total. It was over seventy thousand people, and they were running short on their cash change fund. So they'd like to increase it to a total of three thousand dollars. The main problem is that weekends, the banks are closed, so it's not like they can go out and get change on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday. So this allows them to keep more on hand for what they need. They've got a couple of states over there that they would be able to lock that up.
All right, we do have a request for suspension of rules through second reading. So I entertain a motion for suspension through first reading. Ms. Gibson, second, by Mr. Dine, is that right? All right, any discussion on suspension through first reading?
Gibson's move.
Hearing done, roll call?
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper? Lexi?
Aye.
and Campbell?
Aye.
Rules are suspended on ordinance 2125 through first reading, a vote of nine to zero. Now a motion on first reading. Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
And Mr. Dine, any discussion? Hearing done, then roll call, ordinance 2125, first reading.
Bates? Mr. Bates?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill? Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Hopper.
Phillipson?
Aye.
and Williams?
Aye.
Ordinance 2125 passes, first reading, nine to zero. Motion on suspension through second reading, some move, from Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension through second reading?
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Yes, of course.
I assume all those who handle the money, we're increasing it, they're all buying.
Yes, yeah, so it would, it would be the change for the people at the admissions desk as well as at the concession stands, so that, I think what happens usually is people probably go to the ATM on their way there, so all they have is to learn your bills. So we run short on ones and buys, basically, is what it works out.
All right, any further questions about suspension through second reading? Hearing done, then roll call, on suspension of the rules through second reading, ordinance 2125.
Campbell?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Phillipson?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
and Bates?
Aye.
Rules are suspended on ordinance 2125 through second reading, a vote of nine to zero. Now a motion on second reading.
Some move.
Motion of Mr. Bates, second.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Hearing done, then roll call, ordinance 2125, second reading.
Dunn?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Hill?
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Phillipson?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
All right, ordinance 2125 passes, second reading, nine to zero. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Resolution 2116.
A resolution declaring certain personal property machinery and equipment for tax abatement. Natche Technology Inc., sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Good evening, my name is Amanda Raveview. I'm Vice President of Economic Development with Aspire Chamber Alliance in Economic Development. I get the pleasure of introducing Amy McDonald, the Director of Client Services with KSN. This evening, she'll be talking a little bit more about the growth of Natche. But I just wanted to say, you know, Aspire is very excited that they are continuing their growths and investment here in our community. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us today. As Amanda said, my name's Amy McDonald, I'm from KSN Location Advisors. I'm here with Bob Hamasar, who is President of Natche Technology. And we're here to introduce a new project that they have going on to you tonight. So I'm actually going to first ask him to come up and just share a little bit about the company and a little bit about their projects.
President Campbell, Councilman Gibson, Councilmen, gentlemen, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you tonight. First, a bit about Natche. Natche is a publicly traded company on Tokyo Stock Exchange in Japan, headquartered in Toyama, Japan, with a major office in Tokyo as well. It maintains six divisions in the United States, five of which are headquartered in Greenwood. Natche Technology is many, one of the manufacturing companies of Natche. We make precision ball bearings for the automotive industry. We're a market share leader in many of the products that we produce, but probably the most prevalent is the double-rolled angular contact ball bearings, which are used in an air conditioning compressor clutch for your vehicles. And with that product, we have approximately sixty percent market share in the United States, most of which is made in Greenwood. We also make transmission bearings for Honda Motor. And we have bearings, including our sister plant in Japan, and all of front-wheel drive vehicles for Honda. That's all the way to the second. The request that we're making would allow us to invest in Honda's new technology in electric and hybrid vehicles, gearboxes for those vehicles as well. So we continue our dominance in that market. Natche's, one of the core values of Natche Global is to be an outstanding citizen in the communities that they live and work. And with us, we've done a lot here in the community, Johnson County, as well as the city of Greenwood. And we've always been committed to a clean environment. Our scores are, for the environmental aspects, as well as our wastes, always are well within specifications, and we continue to improve those every year. We've also partnered with Greenwood in a number of projects. We did an outreach project for two years with the drainwater community for a nature center. We planted, we did clean up one year, and then we planted indigenous grasses and plants to really make that look very nice. We also do a, since we're a big supplier to Honda, in fact, we're, we are number one of eighty-one suppliers to Honda transmission plants, which is one in Georgia and one in Russell's Point, Ohio. And we are one of the eighty-one suppliers that supply that, those plants. We participate annually in the Honda Week of Service, which is basically giving back to the community. And in that, we've done a number of things. We've provided support for the shelter for battered women. We did a food drive for the Johnson County Food Bank. And most recently, this was two years ago, because they suspended it last year because of the COVID, we had a backpack at school supply drive. And the picture at the bottom shows our team, obviously decorated in T-shirts which China gives to supplier companies that participate in that. And, you know, that's the amount of school supplies that we're able to donate to the school systems. So, you know, we do a lot of things in improving the environment around our plant. We have, we have quite a good budget for the landscaping, et cetera. Unfortunately, we've had to take down many of the trees, so we've done some tree plantings to rejuvenate that. And we even maintain a garden in the back where employees and associates could get a little bit of property and plant a garden for themselves. And then we share it with kind of a potluck lunch, and people try to use the, the, the plants and the fruits that we grow there. So with that, I don't want to exceed my, exceed my five minutes. And I will turn it over to Amy, who will give us some more information about the program. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, so just to talk a little bit about their project, the project scope that they have going on. So nine million dollars is what they are hoping to invest in expanding their bearing manufacturing line. So this is going to be new advanced technology equipment specifically for grinding, matching, and assembling the bearings that they're going to be producing. And they're expecting to place this nine million dollars of equipment in service through the end of 2022. And then there is also going to be job retention and creation involved with the project. So retention of their current sixty-five jobs. And those jobs have an average annual or average hourly wage of twenty-eight dollars an hour. And then also with this specific line, they're going to be adding ten new positions that average around eighteen dollars an hour without benefits. And that new job creation is going to continue through the end of 2024. And then jobs to be hired, so this is specific to the production line itself. So it'll be skilled trade laborers, assembly machine operators. And then one thing I did want to mention, I thought it worth mentioning, Natche does have a pretty robust health insurance plan for their employees, which is, you know, pretty valuable. So they estimate that to be around fourteen hundred dollars per month per employee. And we mentioned this, we know that benefits don't always necessarily, you know, get taken into consideration with abatement requests, but they do estimate that the value of that brings them over to approximately twenty, you know, over twenty dollars an hour. And then just to talk a little bit about the Greenwood impact of Greenwood. So again, nine million dollars of investment, ten new jobs. Even with the tax abatement, Natche does generate a lot of personal property tax for the community. So we did run, you know, some models to just kind of throw some values out there. If the request for a seven-year personal property tax abatement does get approved, we estimate the value of that to be three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty thousand in personal property taxes that they would pay over the life of the abatement. And if we were looking at, you know, more so like a ten-year timeframe, that would get extended to five hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred that they would keep paying. And then after the abatement would be over, we estimate that their property tax bill on this specific equipment would be six, or seventy-two thousand eight hundred and twenty annually. And that seventy-two thousand dollars would be above and beyond what they already pay on their personal property. So. So just to kind of wrap up, you know, we're respectfully requesting a seven-year personal property tax abatement for them on this investment. And just to keep, you know, some things to consider, you know, their U.S. headquarters has been here in Greenwood since two thousand nine. You know, they're a big employer of skilled trade laborers for the area's residents, and they, you know, are a great employer, very involved in the community here. And, you know, the installation of equipment will be adding over seventy-two thousand dollars per year after the abatement, so. And then just one other comment, we did go in front of the RDC, and we did get a favorable recommendation. So we know you guys aren't taking a vote tonight, but we appreciate your time and consideration of their projects. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, you know, the president?
It may not be your position to answer, maybe the gentleman, but your jobs, when people come in to go to work, I understand you have, you know, maybe, I don't want to degrade any of the jobs because it's a great place, I've been in it. But do you train the people for all those jobs, the skilled labor and everything? Or do they need those skills when they get there?
We have a wide variety. We recently introduced some part-time employees. We only have three right now, but it's been excellent because now we're providing jobs and additional income, because people that accept those jobs usually are housewives that, you know, we have no really shits or anything, you tell us when you can work. So we've got a lot of, we've had people that have been in there at nine o'clock in the morning and would work till two in the afternoon. For the program that we're going with now, with the Honda project, it won't require those jobs, those type of jobs. But what we will have is machine operators. It takes approximately a month and a half to learn the equipment. And then we've got higher skilled positions as well. The, one of the essential processes of manufacturing a bearing is the grinding of the ball bearing races. And that takes a lot of, there's two types of grinding that's done. There's grinding to the outside of the bearing, and then there's race grinding, which is a precision grinding and a homing operation. Those jobs require skills that are, takes time to acquire. For what we call the outside diameters grinding, that sets up all the datums and the reference areas, so all the other grinding process can take place and basically locate on that. So that's a really critical job within the company. That takes approximately six months to learn that. And, you know, there's so much you can teach doing that. There's also kind of a black art that's aimed by just doing it, experimenting, tweaking this, tweaking that. There's a lot of variables in that type of grinding. We deal with the precision level of microns, which is about one thousandth the diameter of the human hair. So it's, and, you know, we mentioned matching. And their matching machines basically takes graded balls that are different sizes and measures the races, the inner race of a bearing and the outer race of a bearing to get a very precise radial clearance, which is important. And particularly in onload transmission, so you have no vibration, you've got a very low level of friction, et cetera. So I hope I answered your question, hopefully too much information.
I'm glad I retired. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your time. All right, miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items in this case that are not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight, which is speak to the council, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none. Moving on, Corporation Council, I'm sorry, Council. We have some CF1s.
Yes, you do. The first one is PCT Holding Group. That was the one that you continued from last time. As it happens, there was an error in the chart that was sent to you, and they actually aren't compliant. So the resolution was sent to you with an email.
Did everybody get that?
I find PCT Holding Group, the resolution 1826.
A motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates.
This one, electronic or not electronic? You're all clear. Well, I didn't see an agenda with the Zoom on there, so.
There is.
Yeah, there is.
When it first was issued, and I don't know if it was 48 hours before, so I don't.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously.
I'll find, I think that's supposed to be Polly, Polly Tanger, resolution 1305, Bates, and two more.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Anything else from the, from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, actually, Chief Ice and I are glad you're here tonight. Sorry to put you on the hot seat. I know we just had the closure of Horseville and effort to put in the roundabout construction there. I've actually received several comments from individuals that live in the neighborhood of the pines. So I was curious if we have any increased enforcement. I know the barriers are there to force people down the Tracy Road, but getting several comments from people that live there in the pines about people that are shotgunning through the pines and just regarding the barriers completely. So wanted to see if you had any increased enforcement or if we have any plans there.
Yeah, so it was brought to our attention last week, a couple of different problems with the backup home testing with the decor. And I, we have issues with people moving barricades on Horseville and running around. We have an officer out there right now, sitting on those barricades and taking people during the morning around. This is one of those things. This is a long-lasting construction project and we've seen it in so many that we have throughout this time of the year. Obviously, we don't have a power that's set on at 24/7, but throughout the, especially summer months, as we monitor it, when we react, people will slow down, they'll change their route. They will come along to find the path of least resistance, which will help us also. But it's one of those things that's going to be kind of trial and error. We are formulating different plans with radar controls and some extra controls in that area. But it's, until people get activated to it, it's going to be a problem, just as a lot of construction sites are. But we are working on it, monitoring it and responding to it, you know, in time. It just, it's impossible for us to see there fall all the way down.
I don't think there was any expectation of 24/7, of course, but I was out there this weekend and witnessed it myself. Obviously, it's kind of a wind through there anyways, but people are finding a way to even almost, what seemed to double the speed limit through there. Obviously, it's very residential, a lot of kids and things like that. So just wanted to know, make sure the city was aware. So I appreciate it.
The deputy mayor and I were just sitting back there talking about it before he brought it up. And we have a meeting tomorrow, morning, starting that. So we're still kind of formulating a game plan and responding to the multitude of problems that it is causing.
Appreciate all you guys doing. I'm always on top of it. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Any other councils?
I see that Daniel is online, and I just wondered if he could give us an update on Madison Avenue and also on the roundabout at Yorktown.
Sure. Excuse me. Can you all hear me pretty well?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding that the Madison Avenue project, that should be wrapping up here in about two or three weeks. I think they are getting close to that. And then on the, the round, the new roundabout project at Main and Meadowview, excuse me, Meadowview, Yorktown, that's progressing very well. They've already removed all of the existing pavement, the old pavement. They've installed a lot of the storm structures, storm pipes, that kind of thing. They, I think even last Friday, or I'm sorry, last, late last week, they were out stabilizing the subgrade. So it is progressing well.
Thank you. It seems like Madison Avenue last week really took, began to take shape with the trees being planted and all. And I'm hoping by the end of July 4th, we've been, we've got our street back.
I know they are, they are working towards, towards that timeframe, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other counsel? Anything? All right, other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council?
I do. I think you are all aware that the governor's latest executive order about public health emergency is only through midnight, June 30th. We do not know what I do with the public health emergency comes to line one. But in this last legislative session, there was a change to the law that if you want to allow participation electronically among your members, you will be able to do that if you adopt a policy to do so. Right now, during the executive order, coming under a different statute that allows you to do it. But until line one, if that's changed, you'll have to have a policy. I have prepared a proposed one that tracks the statute. And the more stringent, but not less stringent, I will forward that to you by email for you to look at. And any comments if you want to do a policy, if you want changes to the policy. Yours will have to be adopted by ordinance because all procedures are codified in the municipal code. So we would have to do an ordinance to do so. But watch for that, and I'll send that to you this week, memo, and then let me know what you like, don't like. So, that's why I'm on this call.
Thank you.
Anything from the controller? Anything from the mayor?
I have nothing.
All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you. Mr. Davis?